Please come to order. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Counselor Kadim.
Here.
Joseph Camara.
Here.
Stephen Camara.
Here.
Kilby.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Pelletier.
Here.
Moveras.
Here.
And Vice President La La Bueco.
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Kilby. All in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Item number one. 175 Guild Street, Fall River, Mass., for the removal of curbing as follows. Petitioner has an existing 16-foot driveway and would like to add a separate 21-foot driveway for additional access to a new carport. The proposed work improves access to the property and does not cause a significant adverse effect to on-street parking in the area. Are there any proponents to this proposal? Any proponents? Are there any opponents to this proposal? Any opponents? Seeing none. Item number two, 92 Hanover Street, Fall River, Mass., for the removal of curbing as follows. The petitioner has an existing 17-foot, 6-inch driveway opening and would like to extend the driveway eight feet on either side for a total driveway width of 33 feet, 6 inches. The proposed work improves access to the property and does not cause a significant adverse effect to on-street parking in the area. Are there any proponents? Any proponents wishing to be heard? Any opponents wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Item three, 29 Lucille Lane, for the removal of curbing as follows. The petitioner is requesting a 24-foot driveway opening. The proposed work improves access to the property and does not cause a significant adverse effect to on-street parking in the area. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Seeing none. Counselor in seat one.
Just on Hanover Street. Madam Clerk, through you. When it says there's no adverse impact to street parking, has that been made? Has that determination been made by a department head?
City engineer.
City engineer. So he's gone out. So when the council, if and when the council approves the road opening, the curb cut, and you have the language that says eight feet on either side, is that a stipulation that they have to have eight feet on either side? And the only reason I bring that up is just when I was going through Google Maps, just reviewing this, 92 Hanover Street does not have, or barely has, the eight feet on one side of the property. So that's the only thing I'm... They do have eight feet, but when you open it up, it's... I mean, the house is so close, you'll never be able to fit a car. So I'm just curious, in terms of when we say that we're going to give a 16-foot opening and we have eight on either side, is it mandatory to have it that way? Or can they...
That is the...
Do they have the flexibility? Because they've got more land on the other side, so they...
Okay. That was the recommendation of the city engineer. He does state that there's eight feet on either side.
Okay. And to have a car fit in the driveway? That's what they look like or look at? Or do they just look to see that there's eight feet that can be opened?
I think he looks at the width of... I'm assuming he looks at both.
Both. Okay. All right. I yield.
Madam President.
Yes, Counselor in seat three.
Just for your information, I know we went through proponents and opponents, but after you did that, the proponent came into the chamber. So if there are any questions...
Which item, Counselor? Which item?
The item that Counselor in seat one was just discussing.
Hanover Street?
William Kitchen. Mr. Kitchen's in the audience, so if you have any questions from the applicant, he's available to answer questions, I'm sure.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat seven.
You know, I've seen a lot of curb cuts, but I've never seen so many with a lot of footage. 37, 33, 24. 24 is not bad. 35 and 38. How many people were notified in the neighborhood that this was going to take place? Because I find that the numbers are big.
There's... According to the Assessor's Office, there were, in the Engineering Department, there were six abutters. They only notified direct abutters.
So it'd be, what, one across, two, one across, each side, four people. Right? All right. There's no... Nobody challenges it, that's okay. But that, are you?
Thank you, Counselor. Before we go to item four, we go back to 92 Hanover Street. Item two. Are there any proponents that would like to come down and speak?
No.
No.
No, but the Counselor, one Counselor did have a question if you'd like to come down.
I have a question.
You good?
Yeah.
You good, Counselor?
I am. If the city engineer went out and he's comfortable with it, and as long as they looked at it, I'm okay with it. I just want to make sure if we're going to approve this, that they're not bound by eight feet and eight feet. Because I, just in my opinion, just looking at it, I don't know that it works. But again, I was looking at Google Maps, so...
Thank you, Counselor. Any more questions? Item four, 1440 Slade Street, for the removal of curbing as follows. Petitioner has an existing 19-foot, 4-inch driveway opening on the east side of the property and would like to add a separate 16-foot driveway on the west side of the property for additional access. The proposed work improves access to the property and will eliminate one on-street parking space. Are there any proponents? Any proponents? Are there any opponents? Any opponents? Seeing none. Item five, 749 Wood Street, Fall River, for the removing of curbing as follows. The petitioner has an existing 19-foot driveway opening on the east side of the property and added an additional 19-foot driveway on the west side of the property for additional access and is seeking council approval after the fact. The proposed work improves access to the property and does not cause a significant adverse effect to on-street parking in the area. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Any opponents? Seeing none.
Motion to close the hearings.
Motion to close the hearings is made by Counselor Kilby.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Long. All in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion adjourned. The hearing made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. All in favor?
Aye.
So voted. City Council Committee on Finance, please come to order. Madam Clerk.
Counselors Kadim.
Here.
Joseph Camara.
Here.
Stephen Camara.
Here.
Kilby.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Pelletier.
Here.
Moveras.
Here.
Vice President La La Bueco.
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. We have one person that's signed up for Citizens Input. Jason Hobart, 253 Cross Street, Norwell, Mass. Have a motion to waive the rules.
Motion to waive the rules.
Motion made by Counselor Stephen Camara, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. All in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Subject matter is the TIF.
Who is he?
If you come down to the table.
The TIF advocate. Who's this guy? The TIF advocate.
Yes. And your name and address to the microphone.
Jason Hobart, 253 Cross Street, Norwell, Massachusetts.
Can you pull that mic a little closer?
I sure can. Nicole here is handing out a shortened version of the deck that I believe you guys have already have seen or have in front of you. So this will just be a little bit quicker to get through some of the points. First, I want to thank the members of City Council for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Jason Hobart. I'm the Senior Vice President of Sales and Marketing for Sexetta. I'd like to apologize right off the bat. Our CEO, Dave Pignolay, wanted to be here, but he's, I don't know, lucky or not lucky enough to be in Europe right now, kicking off one of our newest and largest customers to date. I'd like to take some time and a few moments to describe our company and why we believe Fall River could potentially be our new home going forward. We're a cybersecurity company. We help organizations safeguard their data and ultimately protect people like myself and everyone in this room from data breaches. Breaches that I think we've all seen before. We've probably all heard about the Target breach that happened a few years ago. We see it a lot in the news. Credit card companies, consumer-based organizations get breached, and it's our consumer information, it's our private data, that gets sold and then becomes a problem for all of us. Our software, our applications, everything that we do helps organizations, large, small, private, and public, address the challenges associated with data breaches. We help them avoid data breaches and control the information that they're sharing with their non-employees and their contractors. We have customers that include Geisinger Health, Synchrony Bank, Mayo Clinic, BBVA, Blue Cross of Idaho, Eastman Chemical, Harvard Pilgrim, and Tiffany, among many others. And of course, we're in the process of continuing to sell to and finalize several more large contracts as we go into the end of this year. If you're looking at Slide two, really, if you think about Sexetta, we've been in business since 2006, but most recently, we took a Series A fund round of $10 million that's going to really help us fund our growth, expand our market share, and one of the big areas is to move our offices so that we can support that growth. The state and local incentives from Fall River and the state certainly make the prospect of coming to Massachusetts particularly attractive. We believe that relocating to Fall River is the right move for us, would be the right move for us. We'll be moving 23 jobs to Fall River over the next five years, create 70 new jobs for a total of 93. And a big piece of what we do, and based on the specialized skills of the people that we hire, you know, we're excited to really have an average salary of $60,000, starting salary. And of course, that goes up based on experience and specialized skills.
15 seconds.
We talk about positive impact on the community. We're really talking about education and awareness of cybersecurity within Fall River. We're excited about that. We've already begun to work with, you know, local communities and schools. BMC Durfee High School, in fact, already reached out to us about their cybersecurity program and helping to drive awareness of cybersecurity in the group.
Motion to waive the rules made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Long.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that. We believe there's a lot of potential. We believe that as we educate, as we make awareness of cybersecurity, as we pull from local talent within Fall River, as we look at the universities and schools, and we educate people, that will drive up the awareness and, of course, jobs, build jobs, specialized skills in an industry that is lacking right now. The average, excuse me, the skill gap in cybersecurity right now is sitting at a target at 1.8 million by 2022. So that's a lot of jobs that aren't being filled, and we believe if we start at the ground up and we really focus on education, we really focus on hiring local talent and building that talent ourselves, that we can help address that and make a positive impact on communities like Fall River. With that, you know, I think that's pretty much it. We're excited about the potential of coming to Fall River, and we believe that we can have a positive impact and be one of the building blocks to really driving towards more of a cybersecurity or a tech hub where, you know, we have a group of local talent that we're building and that we're pushing towards.
Thank you. Counselor in seat four.
Thank you. Quick question, sir. What commitment... Forgive me if I didn't see it in the agreement. What commitment have you made to hiring Fall River residents? Is there anything in writing or...
So the commitment is to drive for 70 new jobs. And I believe that we're bringing 23... We're expecting 23 people to move to Fall River, and then we're expecting to hire a good portion of those new hires from within Fall River. The big thing for us as a cybersecurity company is talent, right? And a big piece of that is young talent, straight out of school, who have the tech skills necessary that we can groom. And that's really why we believe this location is going to be a great location for us.
I suggest to you, there's an abundance of talent in the city.
Yeah.
Young people who would love the opportunity.
We definitely agree.
I yield, thank you.
Any further discussion, Counselors? Counselor in seat three, Counselor Camara.
How far along are you in terms of locating in Fall River? Do you have prospects of a particular location at this point?
Yeah, so we've been eyeing 1082 Deval Street. So based on location, amenities, and all of the things that it proposes for us, we believe that's one of the nicest locations. That would be likely one of the locations that we'd highly consider in the event that we make the move.
No tentative leases yet established?
None that I'm aware of.
And how soon would you like to be open?
Yesterday. We have already doubled our size in Newport in terms of where our space and what we need to do. So I think we're targeting early Q1. At the latest, we'd like to get in, you know, end of March, but that's, these are all speculations and estimates at this point.
Would you be relocating the action in Newport to Fall River? Or would you just be expanding into Fall?
We're relocating our entire office.
I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Counselor in seat one.
So I don't know if, really, this is... I think it is the question for you, but it may be for the administration as well. So if you can't answer, I can wait until we actually get to the agenda item. But in terms of just the personal property, what are we looking at for personal property? What exactly is it? Computers, servers, is it...
That's it. It's computers and servers, all the... And there is a document, I believe everyone has, but it's all the equipment that our developers and our people need to maintain, produce, and enhance our products going forward.
Did you say that there was a document?
I believe so, yeah.
To asset schedule?
Did I miss that?
Most of it is laptops and servers required to build and maintain our products. I have a copy if you want to see it.
Yeah, no, I didn't... Yeah, that's it. Okay. Thank you. I yield for now. Just, yeah.
Anything further? Thank you, Mr. Hobart.
Thank you, ma'am.
Item one is the Acting Mayor Resolution Regarding the TIF Agreement for Sexetta Inc. at 1082 Deval Street. The City Administrator and Mrs. Marasco would join us at the table, please.
Good evening, Council President and Counselors. So as you know, you have in front of you the TIF agreement that was voted by the TIF Board on November 19th. This is a TIF for personal property. Counselor in seat one just asked for a list of the property. This property will be looked at on an annual basis and assessed on the annual basis based on a vendor that we currently use, RRC, for the actual assessment and the value. So what you're seeing in this packet is just estimates. As you know, personal property depreciates, so the company is well aware of it. But this is a project that is going to be looked at in conjunction with some state credits as well, with a relocation and some potential total new jobs of 70 jobs on top of the 23 that the gentleman from Sexetta indicated would be coming from the Newport location.
Counselor in seat four.
I would just quickly ask, I understand the nature of this equipment, the high-tech equipment, somewhat very, very special, but do we have any other personal property TIFs in Fall River?
Not that I'm aware of. Most of the TIFs that are provided within the city are real estate TIFs.
Actually, you have both TIF and personal property tax TIFs.
Mixed.
Most of the previous ones are a combination of the two.
How about the solar farms? That's taxed on a personal property basis, I believe.
Yeah, I would have to double-check that. But typically, you know, where there's an investment in real estate that increases the value of real estate, you give it on real estate, and the statute allows you to also include personal property if you want. In this particular instance, while there is no significant investment in real estate, it is appropriate for you to consider a personal property tax only. The allowance of a personal property tax here, which is a significant investment as we move towards cybersecurity and technology, will allow the company to be eligible for state tax credits. In the absence of an incentive from the local, from the municipality, the new... There are new rules with the Economic Assistance Coordinating Council. So this is a recommendation, which is a nominal support of this project, which, again, will allow the company to proceed for economic development incentive program credits.
Yeah. My memory was just refreshed, I believe, on the assessment for the solar farms is just on the land. The pilot is on the actual pieces. And I know we do have a letter here from Senator Mike Rogic, who's supporting this, and so...
There are other examples in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I personally oversaw one in Mansfield before coming here. As you know, I was the Southeast Regional Director for the Mass. Office of Business Development. I oversaw and reviewed and referred all of your TIF agreements for the past five years to the state. There are also one in Stoughton and Amazon, again, only equipment, and Candela in Marlborough, and Clear Motion in Billrica, where that, those municipalities have also granted just personal property tax TIFs as well, for the promise of jobs.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Amazon and Fall River, we...
You gave it on both, as I believe.
Personal property? We did. Okay, so the answer is that we did. There was precedent for it. Okay, I yield, thank you.
Counselor in seat six. Counselor Long.
Can they make a decision as they're going to be a foreign corporation or a registered corporation?
They're going to be, they're going to register as a foreign corporation at the present time.
So they're going to be personal property, they're going to do it?
Yes, taxable.
Well, I just want to...
Use your mic.
Is your counsel, is your microphone on, Counselor?
Yeah. Probably not close enough. I have a little bit of a cold, so excuse me. And looking at this, because it's personal property, I just want people to understand that over the course of the five years, we're talking about $195,000 in the first year, 310 in the second, 330 in the third, 335 in the fourth, and 335 in the fifth. So it's a five-year TIF. The percentages go 100%, 90%, 80%, 70%, 60%. This being personal property and it being mostly high-tech electronics, the value on the personal property would come in in the first year as you bring it in, but that would depreciate significantly in successive years. I think you're going to have a difficult time reaching the $1.5 million in incremental value, but that's neither here nor there, because whatever the value is, the tax will be reflected. So I, I mean, I think it's... While I voted in favor of this to come down to the council, because I think it's kind of different and something that we should all consider, it's kind of interesting to when we start doing TIFs on a personal property. For that reason, it's very, very difficult to keep track of the inventory, to make sure that they're reaching wherever they're reaching, so... So it doesn't, it doesn't matter to me. If they don't do a million five and they only do 700,000, who knows?
That's correct, Counselor. So we will look at the value each year by RRC, and that's exactly what the TIF will be getting granted on.
And by them being a foreign corp, they will be taxed on the personal property.
That's also correct.
And won't get the excise tax, so that's how that works.
That's also correct. And I did inquire of RRC, and I found out they do require the companies to modify the ST form, ST2 form when reported. And then in addition, the company that you have doing your assessments do ask for supplemental information, which will be a comprehensive schedule. So that will be on file with the city on a regular basis, and then the office, which will be monitoring the TIFs going forward, will review those.
I'm going to support this, but I'm a little bit leery about it. But I will support it, because I think it's different. And I want these type of companies to come to Fall River, but I would caution that at some point, we've got to be very careful as when we get these new buildings where we're giving a TIF on the building, then we're giving TIFs on the tenants. We've got a building that we're really not getting any taxes on, so we're going to be a little bit concerned about that. But I will be supporting this, and I want to wish this company the best. Welcome to Fall River. I hope this goes through, and I hope it's very successful and these jobs come to fruition. I yield.
Anything further from the council? Counselor in seat two.
Yeah, I'm also on the TIF Board, and I approve it on the TIF Board, and I think the key to this is 90 new jobs for the city of Fall River, good-paying jobs, and that's something that we've been looking for. So whether it's personal property or tax property, it's a five-year TIF. You're going to pay the percentage of, as you said, increments 100% the first year, then it trickles down. It's a five-year TIF, you're going to get 90 new jobs, good-paying jobs, and then they're going to be spending money locally as well, because they're going to be in the city, so that's going to be a spin-off of that. So I'm full supportive. I hope my colleagues support it as well. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Counselor in seat one.
Just in terms of the agreement that was signed, and my colleague in seat four, I think he kind of alluded to the local preference. So prior agreements, I believe, actually spelled out local preference, and I know this can't mandate that it's Fall River residents who get the jobs, but I see that this, at least I missed it. I was trying to see if there was any language that actually listed the local preference. Is it in the agreement, or is it just silent in terms of local preference, and we just got a...
I can find it for you, Counselor, but I'm pretty sure on, and I apologize, I probably should have read it, they shall, um... Best effort. Work, yeah, work with the Bristol Web and...
What page?
I'm sorry.
What page are you on?
I'm going to, I will find it for you.
Because I was looking on page three, the company's obligation. I thought...
Right.
I thought I would have, I would have seen it under number one.
Excellent. The only referral that, and you're absolutely right, that I'm seeing here is in paragraph five, where we do require the company to report the number of jobs created for Fall River residents, number of Fall River residents employed. This might be a Scrivener's... Thank you very much. It might just be a Scrivener's issue.
So I guess would it be too much to ask if we can update the agreement to include just a local preference? Again, you know, good faith effort to attract or try to attract local residents for these jobs if qualified?
Okay, so we just have to work this out practically. The EACC is expecting an agreement yesterday.
No, I mean, the council, so the council, the council could vote on it, just if you're in agreement with it, I guess I would just make amendment.
Oh, absolutely. And you're right. The language is generally that they will utilize the Bristol County Workforce Investment Board, the Fall River Career Center, and use best efforts to recruit and hire from Fall River residents. And then typically, because you're in the greater Fall River ETA, then we say, and then also, you can reach the greater Fall River ETA.
And then I also noticed it was kind of silent with the number of jobs and the years that they were going to be created, and just in the PowerPoint presentation that the company had presented to us, they actually outline. Could we put that and include that?
Yeah, it's in the preliminary application, which is, will be incorporated by reference.
Oh, okay.
So if you look on page... Four. Page four, thank you, Mary. That's okay. Page four of the application. Teamwork, four, yeah, page four of the application.
Of the application, right.
And as you know, that they will be reported, required to report quarterly. They are also required to report to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts these job numbers, and then in turn, the city has access to these numbers to know about the monitoring thereof.
Okay. I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Saying nothing? Mr. Hoddie, I just had a question. I know the letter from the Acting Mayor came down that he is opposed to this, or he's not supporting this TIF. Do you know what the vote of the TIF Board was?
It was three, three to one, right? There were four of you that evening? Yes, because there was one absent.
Three to one? Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Councilor in seat one?
Thank you. I did mean to ask that question, so I did see the memo that came down from the administration saying that he was not in favor of it, just curious as to the reason.
Uh, personal property. He's not in favor of personal property TIFs, and would prefer them to be real estate TIFs.
Okay. Just in terms of, and again, I guess, I, I'm in agreement with him in terms of personal property. You know, unfortunately, I think the, and some of my colleagues and I were talking about this, I just think it's, you know, the state just puts us in a bad situation where we have to support locally in order for them to kind of incentivize at the state level. So what are they eligible for in terms of dollar amounts? Do we know?
In a gateway city, it could be up towards $7,500 per job.
Okay, so it's...
So it is, it is significant.
Significant, right.
And just be mindful, and I would love to have this conversation with you, we are in competition with Rhode Island, for example, which gives basically all of an employer's contributions to unemployment insurance as, as a tax credit. So I will defer to the company in terms of the competitive nature about where they decided to locate, but that is, I think it's a valid, it's a valid question that you raise, and in this particular instance, the schedule that we put forward, we thought would be, is actually satisfactory enough for the state to accept this application to move forward for state, and hopefully not so burdensome on the city as to, to...
If they don't accept it.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, with that, I yield.
Anything further? Thank you.
I'll make a motion to, oh, is this going to...
It's already in.
It's in full council?
Yes. Do a motion to adjourn. Thank you, ladies.
So motion.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn, finance made by Council Kadeem, seconded by Council Kilby. All in favor? Still voting? Meeting on finances adjourned. City Council will now come into order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Kadeem?
Yeah.
Joseph Camara?
Yeah.
Stephen Camara?
Yeah.
Kilby?
Yeah.
Long?
Yep.
Pelletier?
Yeah.
Pavaris?
Yeah.
Vice President, Malabye.
Here. Will everyone in the council chamber please rise for a moment of silent prayer? Please remain standing for a salute to the flag.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk?
The first item before you is the request for the TIF agreement for Sexetta Incorporated at 1082 Deval.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Joseph Camara, seconded by Counselor Stephen Camara. Any discussion?
Can I just add the amendment that the local hiring preference be added as discussed during Finance Committee?
Could you repeat that amendment again, Counselor Kadeem?
That the local hiring preference be added into the agreement?
Motion made to amend by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Joseph Camara. Any discussion on the amendment? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adopt as amendment?
Motion to adopt as amendment made by Counselor Joseph Camara, seconded by Counselor Long. Any discussion? Does that need to be a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Oh, no, it's not necessary.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Still voting?
Item number two is a communication from the Board of Election Commissioners and the results of the recent city election.
Move to accept and place on file. Second.
Move to accept and place on file made by Counselor Stephen Camara, seconded by Counselor Kilby. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Still voting?
The Traffic Commission requesting amendments to the ordinances.
Move to refer to ordinance committee?
Second.
Motion to refer to the ordinance committee made by Counselor Stephen Camara, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Still voting?
We have item number four first. We have the miscellaneous traffic amendment for passage, excuse me, miscellaneous traffic ordinance for passage through second reading and enrollment.
Move to pass through second reading and enrollment. Second.
Move to pass through second reading and enrollment made by Counselor Stephen Camara, seconded by Counselor Kilby. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Still voting?
Motion to take items five through nine together made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Stephen Camara. All in favor?
Aye.
Still voting? Madam Clerk?
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt items five through nine, made by Counselor Joseph Camara, seconded by Counselor Long. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Still voting?
Item number 10 is the Police Chief's Report.
Move to accept and place on file.
It would be a motion to adopt, Counselor?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Any discussion? Saying none, all in favor?
Aye.
Still voting?
We have applications for auto repair shop licenses.
Any objections from this part?
No, Counselor.
Move to adopt all repair license renewals.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Stephen Camara?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Long. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Still voting?
We have a number of claims.
Move claims to corporation counsel. Second.
Motion to refer to corporation counsel made by Counselor Stephen Camara, seconded by Counselor Kadeem. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Still voting?
We'll take 13 and 14 together?
I'm sorry, say that again, Counselor?
If clerk wants to read it first, we'll just take 13 and 14 together.
Item 13 are minutes of the planning board, and item 14 are minutes of the City Council Public Hearing, held on November 12.
Motion to take items 13 and 14 together made by Counselor Stephen Camara?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Long. Motion to adopt made by Counselor Kilby?
On the motion to take them together, yes?
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Still voting? Motion to adopt made by Counselor Kilby?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Long. All in favor?
Aye.
Still voting?
And item 15 is a communication from a city resident regarding an issue with stray cats.
Move to refer to ordinance committee?
Motion to refer to committee on ordinance made by Counselor Stephen Camara?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kadeem. Any discussion? Councilor in seat three?
Just briefly, I noticed that the letter was not signed. I did speak to someone who said they were going to send the letter, so I think I know from where, from whom the letter comes. She is asking for a ordinance on feeding of cats, and it seems as if it is a health problem, at least a health problem, in her particular situation. So I think in, out of respect for the request, that we take a look at it and see if there's any way it can be addressed through ordinance.
Thank you, Counselor. You yield?
Yes, Ayew.
Anything further? Councilor in seat six?
You know, I understand it's a problem, but you know, you put these things through ordinance, okay, we passed an order saying you can't feed a cat. Who's going to, who's going to enforce that? Going to have a cat feeding officer? I mean, where's that going to go?
Animal control.
I just wanted where that goes.
Animal control.
Animal control. There we go.
Do you yield, Counselor?
I yield.
Anything further? Motion to refer to the committee on ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor seat six is opposed.
It's ridiculous. Sure.
Haven't noticed a cat lost.
Just a bit of hunting season on stray cats.
Motion to accept and place on file. Second.
Motion to accept made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Stephen Camara. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Still voting?
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on December 3rd.
Motion to adopt for first reading.
Madam Clerk, could you finish reading?
Voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading. These are personnel ordinances relating to the Water Department.
Motion to pass through first reading made by Counselor Kadeem?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Long. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Still voting?
Just need a brief recess.
We need a brief recess, Madam Clerk?
Madam President, just while we're doing the brief recess, is it any possibility that we can switch to the next meeting, which is, I think is the 17th, either to the 16th or the 8th? No, I mean to the 16th?
Ten-minute meeting.
Is that...
Madam Clerk, what's the date of the next meeting?
17th. Tuesday, December 17th.
What would you suggest, Counselor?
The 16th, if possible.
Monday, the 16th? Does anyone have an objection to changing the date of the next meeting to Monday, the 16th?
I'd just like to be at the next meeting. Unfortunately, if it's on the 17th, I just got a family commitment that I've got to be at, and I know there's some councils, that's the last meeting, so I'd like to be here for that.
No problem.
Is that fine with the rule? Yes?
Sure.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Do we need for a vote?
Tuesday, 7th, Monday, the 16th.
Is that sound clear?
So... Yeah, she's just trying to figure out if we need to make a motion now. Yeah, she's just trying to figure out if we need to make a motion now. Yep. Say it. You say a sign, do not feed the pigeons, command of the Clipper. Whoever enforces, don't feed the pigeons, having enforced, don't feed the cats to them. It's an ordinance. I think it was done, I think I know what it was.
City Council is now back in session. Madam Clerk?
We have the miscellaneous traffic ordinance for passage through final ordination.
Move to pass to final ordination.
Counselor, motion to move through, pass through final ordination made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Long. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Still voting?
And we have the City Council order rescheduling the City Council Committee on Finance and Regular Meeting from Tuesday, December 17th, to Monday, December 16th.
Motion made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Long. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Still voting?
That's all we have.
Motion adjourned made by Counselor Kilby?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Long. All in favor?
Aye.
Still voting?
And we have the City Council order rescheduling the City Council Committee on Finance and Regular Meeting from Tuesday, December 17th, to Monday, December 16th.